We'll call the April 3, uh, City County Planning Commission to, uh, to meeting. And, uh, Jessica, would you, would you give a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Valance, Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Commissioner Day.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Rich. Commissioner Rutter. Commissioner Unsell. Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. So we have the minutes of the April 7th meeting, uh, in your packets. Uh, if there are any corrections, comments, and would ask for a motion that they be approved.
Agreed.
Second.
Commissioner Clark.
Sandy.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Commissioner Day.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell. Commissioner Unsell.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren.
Approved as, as submitted. We have the subdivision site and development plans. Are there any comments or corrections? If not, we will, we will approve as, as, as mailed. And then the last thing, uh, item D is our letter of credit and performance bonds. You have a corrected, uh, corrected memo number three. It was not in the mail packets, the release of the cash bond for Hunt Village Lane and Access Road and $21,000 from Hunt Family property. Any comments? They stand approved as mailed, is that correct, Ben?
Uh, we do need a, uh, a motion to approve that.
I'm sorry, I forgot.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve the letter of credit and performance bond as presented with the one revision.
Second. Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Commissioner Day.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Is there any old business?
Mister, uh, Mister Warren, this is Ham up more. Um, I've, before you start the public hearings, I'd request that you order that the Warren County zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations, and the comprehensive plan with all of its elements, uh, along with the commission's entire file for each application on tonight's docket. Uh, uh, with the qualification for each staff witness, be ordered a part of the record. Finally, I'd request that you administer the oath to each of those staff witnesses.
Thank you, Ham. And you all swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Forgot, forgot that, excuse me, a little bit different. And then we have our, uh, rules conduct for our, our public hearing. Is there, is there any old business tonight?
No, sir.
Okay. Any new business?
No, sir.
All right. Then we'll move into our public hearings. The first item tonight is 2020-02-RWC. The Intermodal Transportation Authority has filed an application to close approximately 6.6 acres or 2, 2,875,536 square feet on Ms. Ms. Paul Road. So who is presenting that, Rachel?
Yep, that'll be me. Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application conference on, uh, actually, we didn't have a pre-application conference for this application. I forgot, it's a right-of-way closing application and we don't do those for these. Uh, but the property location, as you can see from the aerial, is the, uh, 6.6 acre portion of Ms. Paul Road, it's outlined in yellow. Uh, it is adjacent to two properties that were rezoned in 2018. Um, and you will see that on the zoning map here. Uh, so these two properties, uh, those were rezoned in 2018. Can you all see my hand moving on the screen just to?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and so a condition of that zoning map amendment is that this portion of Ms. Paul Road be closed, or that improvements be made to this portion of Ms. Paul Road to Louisville Road to accommodate, uh, industrial traffic. And so the first of those options to satisfy that condition was selected, and that is the reason for this right-of-way closing request to be made. You'll see on, uh, page one of your staff report, uh, that section 3.17 of the zoning ordinance outlines the required items that must be included with all right-of-way closure applications. And these items are outlined on the bottom half of page one of your staff report, and also, um, going on to the top portion of page two. Uh, the only agency that requested conditions as a part of this application was Warren County Water District, and they requested that a 10-foot water line easement be required along the new property line, and that the existing water line needs to be relocated. Also, on page two of your staff report, you will see the findings of fact from KRS 82.405. These outline the findings of fact necessary for closing a right-of-way. Those are there for your reference. And then last, our staff summary and suggested the conditions of approval. Uh, we have noted in the staff report that the applicants have met all criteria listed in both the zoning ordinance and in KRS 82.405. And staff has suggested three conditions of approval for this right-of-way closing application. The first is that a plat consolidating a closed right-of-way with the adjacent properties must be recorded at the Warren County Courthouse within 120 days of final approval of this applicant, or of the right-of-way closure by the Bowling Green City Commission. And that before recording such plat, the applicants shall also submit and seek approval of a road name change application for the southern portion of Ms. Paul Road that will remain after the right-of-way is closed. The last two conditions listed on your staff report, I already referenced, those were the requests from Warren County Water District, so we have incorporated those into our proposed conditions as well. Uh, the screen shows the, a more zoomed-in view of the portion of the right-of-way to be closed. That's kind of this gray hatched area here. Um, right here, whoops. Sorry. Going the wrong way. Sorry. So here we go, uh, this hatched area here, again, that's the portion of the right-of-way to be closed. The condition, uh, regarding the plat would then, uh, take in this portion of the right-of-way to be closed and add it to each of these properties to lot one and lot two. Uh, I believe that's all I have for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Thank you, Rachel. Are there any comments from commissioners?
Rachel, can you tell us why they didn't go all the way up to the end of that property line? I'm looking at the plat that shows what the properties are, and it doesn't look like they went all the way up to the end of that gray area.
Yeah, um, I believe that's because the adjacent property owner, um, in that scenario did not agree to close that portion of the right-of-way. Um, and so it only involves what is from here south.
Okay.
But there won't be any access, um, to anything north of here. There won't be access to any sort of industrial traffic.
Okay. Okay, but that was my wonder, I was wondering if that was the entrance or something, so.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Sandy. Any other comments from commissioners? And I'm assuming there's no opposition to this?
Will there be a gate posted there?
Uh, that was another condition, uh, in the development plan conditions with the zone change, is that a physical barrier also be placed at the end of the portion to be closed that would physically prohibit traffic on to Ms. Paul Road. Thank you. You're welcome.
Ben, you're on mute.
Ben, you're muted.
Gotcha.
Ben?
Gotcha. I didn't unmute myself. Um, so, uh, uh, just interrupt here a second. Uh, Mr. Zach Cook from the chamber is here as well. We might ask if he wants anything, uh, wants to add anything to the application. And then, uh, once you pass the public comment, I'll go ahead and, uh, hit the unmute all button, and we'll just pause a few seconds to, to see if we can, uh, see if anybody has any other comments. Before you understand.
So, uh, Mister, Mister Cook, are you able to hear us?
Yes.
And, um, the chairman and the executive director have, uh, asked if you would like to add anything to the staff report.
No, no further comment.
Very good.
Okay, at this time, I'll just hit unmute all, so, uh, everybody can, uh, is live if they wish. And, uh, at this point in time, we're, we're just asking if there is any, uh, public comment or questions, uh, or comment or questions about this application. Ready for your next step there, uh, Chair Warren.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear, were there any public comments?
I didn't hear.
I think all we got was some background noise, but I don't believe there was any, any comment.
I'll make the motion.
Do we need to add to the motion about the physical barrier being placed? Does that need to be in the motion itself?
No, that's a requirement of the development plan conditions.
Make the motion to approve the right-of-way closing document, 2020-RWC, with the following conditions, plat consolidating the closed right-of-way. The adjacent properties must be reported at the Warren County Courthouse in 120 days of final approval for the right-of-way closure by the Bowling Green City Commission. 10-foot water line easement be designated along the new property line. The existing water line will be relocated. My motion is based on the finding of the facts presented in the staff report and presented in this public hearing. That the right-of-way closing is in compliance with sections 31 and 32 of the Warren County zoning ordinance.
Second. Jessica?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Our second item tonight is, is, uh, number 2020-10ZBG. Kevin and Bethany Crossland have filed an application to rezon tracks of land containing approximately 10 to 4 acres located at East 13th Avenue, corner of East 13th Avenue and Harding Alley, from RM3 Townhouse Multifamily Residential to Office Professional Residential with a general development plan.
Commissioner Warren, the next case, number three, is also to be heard at the same time for that one, if you don't care to call that case as well.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Jessica.
No problem.
And also to be heard same time as 2020-V01. Kevin and Bethany Crossland have applied for a variance on the property located at East 13th Avenue, corner of 13th Avenue and Harding Alley. This property is current, currently zoned RM3 Townhouse Multifamily Residential.
Thank you, Chair Warren. I, I'm trying to see, uh, all the people that have joined our meeting. I do not see the applicant present.
Uh, Kevin Crossland? Bethany Crossland, are you all with us? Jessica, uh, do you have a phone number for them?
Uh, yes, sir, while the next case is being presented, I will go call them.
That, thank you. So, Mr. Chair, uh, I'd suggest that we, uh, pass this, these two hearings for the Crosslands and move on to the next item on your agenda. And if we can get them on the line, we'll come back to it, if that's acceptable.
Yes, sir, thank you, Ham. Our next item is item number four, 2020-12Z County. Gary and Janet Shake have filed an application to rezon tracks of land containing approximately 7.81 acres located at zero and 2145 Mount Olivet Road from agriculture to rural residential and RE residential state with a general development plan.
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application conference for this property on January the 28th. As you mentioned, it's located on Mount Olivet Road and contains roughly 7.81 acres. The current zoning of the property is agriculture, and the current use of the property is also agriculture and single-family residential. The future land use designation for the property is moderate density residential. This future land use designation encourages areas developed for higher density residential uses, including single-family detached and attached development, as well as semi-detached multifamily development and duplexes and townhouses, apartment buildings, condominiums, and mobile home parks. densities in this future land use category should range between 3.5 and 13 dwelling units per acre. Staff has noted that sewer is not yet available in this area along Mount Olivet Road, which supports the reason for a lower density at this time. With that, I'm going to jump to the site plan showing the proposed configuration of the three proposed lots. Um, you can see, uh, that there are two zones proposed with this application. One, the first is the rural residential zone. That would be applicable to this proposed lot here. Whoops, sorry. Uh, so that would be this lot here. And then the remaining portion of the property, uh, also here, this is proposed, this one acre lot here would be proposed to be rezoned to RE. And then also the remaining portion here would be designated as rural residential. Setbacks would adhere to the standards in the zoning ordinance, including a 25-foot front yard setback for all properties, 25-foot side rear yard setback for properties zoned rural residential, and a side and rear setback of 10 feet for the property zoned residential estate. Going back to the aerial view, you can note that, uh, portions of the property are heavily wooded. And staff has also noted that there is a small sinkhole located on the proposed 4.81 acre tract. I'll jump back to the site plan, bear with me here. Not too far. Sorry. Okay. Um, moving on here, I'm going to jump on to the general development plan and the development plan conditions that were submitted with this application. Uh, these are on, uh, page three of your staff report. Number one, the minimum home size for any new home constructed on the property shall be 1,300 square feet. Number two, plain-faced block and metal shall be prohibited for any new home constructed on the property. Number three, each new residence shall obtain a permit from the Barron River District Health Department prior to the issuance of a building permit. Four, existing vegetation should be maintained to the greatest extent feasible during future construction on the property. Five, any construction on the property will occur outside the area of any designated sinkhole or, and, or such sinkhole must be properly repaired prior to any construction within the sinkhole. And six, any new access to the property shall be coordinated with and approved by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. Moving on to our Focus 2030 category review, staff evaluated 14 items from the comprehensive plan, and we found that nine of those items were in compliance. There were zero items that were, were not found to be in compliance. And then there are five items that the P, that the planning commission should determine in compliance. And I'm going to touch on those items. The first being LU 1.1.3, which looks at compatibility. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the surrounding area. Next, LU2, which looks at quality of development and character preservation. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that will protect the character of the area. Next, HN 1.3, which looks at compatibility of infill development. The proposal may comply with this item, and the planning commission should determine if the proposal is a compatible infill development that will strengthen the existing neighborhoods in the vicinity. And last, HN 2.1 and HN4, which look at suitability of the proposed development and housing options in the area. The planning commission should determine if the proposed development is located in a suitable location, and if it will enhance the array of housing options available in the area. And with that, I'll wrap up with our points to consider on page one. The first is that the planning commission should determine if the proposal is consistent with the future land use map and the moderate density residential category. Next, the proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria. And finally, the proposed general development plan complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design and compatibility and meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. So that is all I have for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Are there any, any comments for me and the commissioners?
Why are they doing two different, uh, RR and RE? Wouldn't it be better to have all one thing?
Not necessarily in this case, Commissioner Clark. There is an existing mobile home on this property here, uh, the proposed two-acre tract. And the zoning ordinance requires the rural residential zone for a mobile home. And so that's why that zoning designation was selected for this lot. Um, the applicant may be able to speak more to this, but I think it's their desire only to have this lot as one acre. And so the minimum, uh, the minimum acreage in rural residential is two acres. And so for that reason, this lot had to be rezoned to RE because of the one-acre size that's proposed. And then the remainder would fall under the five-acre minimum in the agriculture district. And so it's proposed to be rezoned to rural residential, which again, has that two-acre minimum lot size.
So Rachel, there will be a total of two building lots here, is that correct?
Two additional lots, yes, because there is an existing mobile home on this property here. And these would be two vacant properties.
See, and so, uh, on page one, we see a, we see a property with, uh, in red lines that's outlined, it has two, this seems to indicate two building lots. That's a total of two.
So there are two existing tracks now. Uh, sorry, I should have mentioned that. So the, the, the proposed development is currently in two tracks. The rezoning application would allow the development of one additional track.
Okay. And do we have in our packet, uh, the lot, the proposed layout of those two additional lots?
Yes, that should be on page.
10.
Thank you, page 10.
Thank you so much.
Will there be three separate driveways? Has anybody looked at those?
Uh, that I'm not sure of. I don't know that they're that far in the planning stage. Uh, but you will see in Development Plan Condition 6 that any new access would have to be coordinated with and approved by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet.
Do you know if they've talked to anybody yet?
I'm not sure. That would be a question the applicant would have to answer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Rachel, last question for you, please. Um, can you speak to compatibility? I see that there is a, there's another subdivision that's nearby. How does the 1,300 square, uh, proposed minimum compare to the, uh, properties in, uh, in the adjacent subdivision?
Uh, I think if you look on, let's see, that should be page two of your staff report, under, uh, site design and compatibility, the third item down, surrounding architectural features. You'll note that home sizes in the area range from 910 to 2,569 square feet. And the median home size is 1,308 square feet. So the proposed minimum is right in line with that median home size.
I see, thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners? Or the applicants on the, on our, on our meeting?
Gary and Janet Shake?
I believe Dickie Coleman is, it's, uh, was it Cassandra Jones?
I, I didn't hear you, Jan.
We didn't hear you, Jessica.
I'm on her computer.
Yeah, okay. But, uh, he's listed as Cassandra Jones, but that is Dickie Coleman. Uh, he's the, he's the brother to Ms. Shake.
I had to Face, FaceTime my sister because she couldn't get on.
And so would you give us your name, please?
Dickie Coleman.
And how are you related to Gary and Janet Shake?
My sister and brother-in-law, but he passed.
Okay. And so Gary Shake is deceased?
Yes.
And you're here tonight representing Janet Shake?
Uh, no, I'm representing myself. She couldn't get on. I got her FaceTime on my phone, on her other phone, so she could at least hear the meeting.
Can, can Janet Shake hear us?
She said yes.
I heard her.
Okay. Ms. Shake, do you care to add anything further to your application other than what's already been said tonight?
Could you hear that?
I did, yes.
Okay.
Can you go ahead and repeat that anyway? I don't think everybody heard that.
Oh, I asked, um, Ms. Shake, Janet Shake, if she had anything further to add to the application or the comments made. And, uh, I heard her to say that she had nothing else to add.
Thank you.
So if there are no questions of Ms. Shake, then, Mr. Chairman, if you might inquire as to whether there's any opposition?
Yes, sir. Is there any opposition to this tonight? Okay, hearing none, and, uh, thank you, Ms. Shake, for being on the call. Uh, I would ask for a motion, buddies, please.
I make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with the conditions on the general development plan, docket number 2020-12Z County. Based upon the testimony that was presented in this public hearing, the zoning map amendment is consistent with the Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the public hearing.
Second. Jessica, would you call?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Clark?
Do we need to revise the application to have just Ms. Shake as the applicant before we make this vote?
The application was signed by both of the then owners necessary to convey fee simple title. And with the death of Gary Shake and the ownership of this property and survivorship, Janet Shake is the survivor and the sole owner of the property. And so I think the application as prepared was accurate, both as to the time it was signed, and continues to be accurate tonight.
Okay, because I was trying to figure out who Dickie Coleman was.
Brother-in-law.
I think he's on the phone, was able to get on to the conference and is then relaying by some other means, the sound to Janet Shake. Yeah, FaceTimes Janet Shake.
He's Janet's brother.
Okay, well, he signed the application and that's what I was trying to figure out.
Because I'm the buyer.
Application.
I'm the buyer of the acre.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Coleman is proposing to buy lots, well, it's not labeled as a lot number, the one-acre tract.
And so he's a contract bender for one of the three acres, one of the three lots. Yes. Is that right, Rachel?
That's correct.
And did he sign the application?
Yes.
So I think the application is correct with the addition of that information that Mr. Coleman signed it also.
Okay, okay, thank you. Yes, then I vote yes.
We had a motion on the floor. I don't believe we had a second.
Yeah, I seconded it.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Okay, so Jessica, we started the roll call?
Yes, sir. I'll just restart it just to make the record clear. Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Buck Sally?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Case has been approved. Do we have the Kevin or Bethany Crossland, or do you want to just move on to the next one on the line?
I think Kevin has joined us. I see him at the bottom of my screen.
Why don't we go back and do case number three and, number two and three, excuse me? And that is 202010ZBG Kevin and Bethany Crossland filed an application for zoning tract's plan containing crosswalks, 12 tenths of an acre located at East 13th Avenue, corner of East 13th Avenue and Harding Alley, from RM3 Townhouse Multifamily Residential to OPR Office Professional Residential with the general development plan. Also included in that would be item number three, 2020V01 Kevin and Bethany Crossland filed, have applied for variances on the property located at East 13th Avenue, corner of East 13th Avenue and Harding Alley. This property is currently zoned RM3 Townhouse or Multifamily Residential.
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application conference on January the 16th for the property you just described, located on East 13th Avenue, also running alongside Harding Alley. The current zoning of the property, as you mentioned, is RM3. The property is currently shown as vacant on our land use layer because a demolition permit has been reviewed and approved for this property. The applicant may be able to tell us whether or not that structure still remains, but I believe it has been demolished. Moving along to our future land use map, the future land use category for this property is mixed-use residential. This future land use designation applies to mixed-use areas where taken as a whole. The primary land use is residential and a variety of housing types and densities balanced by complementary retail, office, institutional, and civic uses. The distribution of land among these various activities shall be implemented through specific zoning with standards addressing the form and character of development to ensure compatibility. This designation applies to the historic core of downtown Bowling Green and urbanized areas being redeveloped with the primary use as residential where complementary commercial and services are provided in a contiguous area. Here, development standards should be tailored to emphasize an urban character and a mix and intensity of development appropriate to this unique center of activity. Standalone commercial development should not exceed 10% of any contiguous area designated as mixed-use residential, and no commercial footprint should exceed 10,000 square feet. Compatibility should be addressed by applying policies in LU 1.1.3 in conjunction with the general development plan. So with that, I will jump to the exhibit and I will speak to some things on this. Moving on to our site characteristics review section of the staff report, under layout, lot sizes, and setbacks, this is the proposed layout. You can see the proposed building is situated in the corner there at 13th and Harding Alley with parking proposed to the rear of the building. And setbacks will adhere to the standards in the zoning ordinance for the proposed OPR zone with the exception of the side yard setback along Harding Alley. That is the portion of the property for which variance has also been requested, and I will go over that in just a bit, in a little bit more detail. Moving along through the site characteristics review, we have noted under the transportation infrastructure, again, that the property does front both 13th Avenue and Harding Alley with the parking to be located to the rear off of Harding Alley. Under our site design and compatibility review section, under the surrounding land uses, I'm going to jump back to the land use map. You can see from the existing land use map, if it will change, sorry, that properties in the area are a mixture of single-family residential, multifamily residential, commercial, public, and public institutional uses, and that there are also several vacant tracts in the vicinity. Under the surrounding architectural features, staff has noted that structures in the vicinity are one-story in height. The applicants did not address the height of the proposed structure. Just for a frame of reference, the maximum height in the proposed OPR zone is 42 feet. Next, under the building materials review, staff has noted that the majority of the existing structures in the vicinity utilize vinyl. There are also a couple of brick, block, and concrete buildings in the area. The applicants did not specify building materials for the proposed structure. Next, under building orientation, staff has noted that the majority of the existing structures along East 13th Avenue are oriented to face East 13th Avenue. The applicant stated on page two of the rezoning application that the proposed building will face East 13th Avenue, but there is no commitment in the development plan conditions requiring that the applicants adhere to this requirement. Next, under signage, the OPR zone permits one monument-style sign to be located within the development, no more than five feet in height and no more than 32 square feet in sign-face area. Wall signage is also permitted up to 50 square feet per facade or 5% per facade, whichever is greater. The applicants referenced a proposed sign in the variance application, but did not specify the anticipated style, height, or square footage of the proposed sign. Moving on to the proposed development plan conditions, number one, the building will be built in the same style as the adjacent residential property. Two, the existing mature trees will remain and the lawn shall be reseeded and well-cared-for. Three, the layout of the building will allow for the property to be easily converted back to residential should the need arise. Four, hours of operation are normally from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And five, there will be no lighting installed nor any noise pollution generated by the use of the property that would interfere with the adjacent landowner's quiet enjoyment of their property. Next, moving on to the Focus 2030 category review, staff evaluated 16 items and found that six of these items were in compliance, two were not in compliance, and eight of the items the planning commission should evaluate for compliance. First is LU 1.1.3. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the area. Next, LU 2. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is high-quality development that includes design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. Next, LU 2.3.1 and TR 2.1, which look at transportation considerations relating to access management and safety. And the applicants did not address access to the proposed development. Next, LU 2.5. The planning commission should determine if the proposal will protect nearby neighborhoods. Next, LU 2.5.2 and HN 1.2. The planning commission should determine if the proposed infill development is compatible with the surrounding area. Next, LU 2.5.3. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is an opportunity for revitalization and redevelopment. And last, HN 1 and HN 1.3, which look at character and pattern of development, the planning commission should determine if the proposal is a compatible infill development that will maintain or improve the existing character and pattern of development within the area and if it will strengthen nearby neighborhoods. Moving on to the zoning ordinance reference for the variance request, this comes from section 4.6.8 of the zoning ordinance, which states that the side yard setback in the OPR zone is 10 feet. If you look at the exhibit that's currently on the screen, you'll see that the proposed setback along Harding Alley is five feet. And so the applicants have requested a variance of five feet to relieve them of the additional five-foot requirement. You also will note the variance findings from KRS 100.243. Those are there for your reference. And in order to address these findings, the applicant supplied a narrative as a part of their variance application. This narrative is listed on page five of your staff report. If you'd like to follow along, I will read what was submitted by the applicants. 1027 East 13th is located directly behind the former Judy's Castle Building on the 31W bypass. Across the street from my property is a building used for office space. To the rear of the building is a vacant lot, which is then bordered by a commercial building used as a martial arts studio. The building that currently sits on the property is very much dilapidated and not suitable for human habitation. The building that will be constructed will be built to match the aesthetics of the residential houses in the neighborhood. It shall face East 13th and shall have a small parking area in the rear directly off Harding Alley, which borders the property. The property is separated from the adjoining residential property with mature trees that will remain on the property. The lawn will be reseeded and properly tended. There will be a sign on the lawn simply stating Kevin R. Crossland, Attorney at Law, and then a short list of practice areas. The new building will be built in such a way that it may be used in the future as a residential home if it is ever sold and repurposed. The demolition of the old dilapidated building and the construction of the new office will enhance the overall aesthetics of the neighborhood and will benefit the tenants of the surrounding homes and businesses by being occupied by a professional office that is bound to conduct itself in strict compliance with Kentucky Rules of Professional Conduct as determined by the Kentucky Supreme Court. This zone change is in compliance and furtherance of the Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan because it improves the area, does not place any burden on the current utilities or infrastructure, nor will it interrupt the flow of traffic or the quiet enjoyment of the surrounding properties. My hours of operation are 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., but we generally are out of the building by 4:00 p.m. So again, that was the justification for the variance request that was listed directly on the variance application submitted by the applicant. Next, I'm going to jump back to page one and wrap up with our points to consider. First, the proposal is consistent with the future land use map in the mixed-use residential category. The proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria with the exception of the side yard setback, for which the variance has been requested. The proposed development plan complies with some of the review criteria for site design with exceptions noted relating to building height, building materials, building orientation, access, and signage. The planning commission should consider if the proposed development meets the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan and if it is compatible with the area. And the planning commission should consider if the requested variance arises from special circumstances, which do not generally apply, to land in the general vicinity, or if the strict application of the provisions of the regulations would deprive the property owner of the reasonable use of the land. And then we have also noted, as the last item to consider, that when the staff report was finalized, the applicant indicated that they would not be able to submit revisions to include in the staff report, but that they would be happy to provide an update during the public hearing on some of the items that are listed for your consideration. Again, that would be in the point to consider number three. Those items dealt, again, with building height, materials, orientation, access, and signage. That is all I have for the staff report, but I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. We have, there's two items here. One is the, we'll get into here in just a minute, we have two items, and that's the zone change and then the variance. So are there any comments from commissioners for what has been presented?
No, I think it fits, I think it fits in other things around that area. It makes sense.
I think Commissioner Graham is trying to say something, but I cannot hear him.
Ah, okay.
We can hear you now, Commissioner.
Is that it? Okay, thank you. And so my question is regarding the general development plan condition number one. This is a building will be built in the same style as the adjacent residential property. Do we have, has the applicant submitted something that depicts the adjacent residential property? How do we measure that?
That's a good question, Commissioner Graham. I think the applicant may want to speak more to that. If we need to get additional information to kind of iron out what the intent of that condition is and what exactly that means, that's probably something that we need to do during this meeting.
Okay, and then building orientation was addressed by the applicant in their submission, but it isn't, as you pointed out, a part of the general development plan condition. And I assume that's something we would ask the applicant for, is that correct?
Yes, that may be worth the applicant clarifying. I think that was one of the items that he indicated in our correspondence, that he would be able to speak to some of these items during the hearing, that he just did not have time to address all of the issues before the staff report was finalized and sent out.
Understood. And lastly, parking is an address, but I assume parking would be Dickie's building application, is that correct?
Yeah, so the proposed use is an office. The zoning ordinance requires one space for 300 square feet of building area, and the proposed parking shown on the site plan would meet that requirement.
Thank you.
Do we know how big the building's going to be?
It may actually be labeled. Let me see if I can zoom in. Give me one second here. It's not labeled, but let me do a quick calculation here. Roughly 1,100 square feet. I believe. I believe, the applicant may need to verify that.
He said that's accurate.
So if that's the case, we may actually have to look at adding an additional parking space or two.
But don't, hey Rachel, don't they also get to count on-street parking?
On-street parking does not count.
Okay. So Rachel, does that need to be a part of the development plan conditions, parking? Or is that something we need to address here tonight?
It, it would not necessarily need to be part of the conditions. The parking requirement, this is just a concept at this point. We would verify the details when the building permit is applied for.
See.
And verify that the parking requirements based on the size of the building are met. There's also opportunities with surrounding properties in the area. If there's different peak times of usage, there's options to share parking. I know some of the other commercial properties in the area may not utilize all of their parking, so given that this is a residential setting, kind of on this section of East 13th, we would be able to also look at options of sharing parking with other commercial properties in the area.
I see, thank you. I really think we need to ask the applicant what he's planning on building. I agree with that.
I'd be glad to answer that. It's just going to be a vinyl-sided, single-story building, roughly 1,100 square feet. The house, the residential home that's next door to it is built out of the same material. So that's what we mean when we say it's going to fit in with the same style as the adjacent property. And we are going to build it to look just like a house, you know? It's not going to be an obviously commercial-style property, and so that we don't interrupt the overall aesthetics of the surrounding community. And so it will face towards East 13th, just like the residential property next door to it.
Mr. Crosland, do you have any objection to us adding some of those items to the development plan conditions, such as building orientation, exterior, perhaps what type of foundation, et cetera?
And height.
I have no objection to that at all.
Okay, and so could someone help me here? What would we typically see in the development plan conditions to address the vinyl-sided home that Mr. Crosland has described here?
So, Mr. Graham, this is Hamp. I would suggest that... Mr. Graham?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. I'd suggest that development plan condition number one be amended to read as follows. The building will be architecturally compatible with the surrounding residential property. The building shall be oriented to front on East 13th Street. The building shall include on its exterior no plain face block.
Yes, and could we also add, I don't know if you mentioned it already, Hamp, but could we add the exterior would be vinyl siding? I just want to make sure this property doesn't get transferred for some reason prior to building and someone decides they want to put some other exterior on it.
Yes, and then we'd add that the building will be, the exterior of the building will be of vinyl siding.
Okay, perfect, and I think...
We like with vinyl or cementitious siding.
There we go. And one, and one story in height.
The building shall be, no, shall have no more than one story in height.
Okay, perfect. I think that addresses all of my concerns.
Jessica, did you record all of that?
I do have a recording started.
And Kevin, did you hear me recite those additions to development plan condition number one?
I did, sir.
And do you consent to those conditions for yourself and on behalf of your wife?
I do, yes.
Thank you.
And we didn't address the size of the monument sign.
Okay.
Is it going to be a monument sign?
Monument sign. I'm not sure what a monument sign would be. I mean, it's going to be a two posts in the ground with a sign, like you see, maybe exterior illuminated. I don't know if that's what you're talking about, the monument sign, but it's not going to be...
So Jessica, would you, I'm sorry, Rachel, would you propose a square footage for the sign and a maximum height for the sign?
I can tell you that the zoning ordinance allows signage in the OPR zone up to five feet in height and with a maximum sign face area of 32 square feet. So the, the planning commission should consider if that's compatible with the area. If not, they may want to consider asking the applicant to include signage that's smaller in square footage or in height. Also, I guess what was described as far as the style of signage would not be a monument style sign. So if that's the wish of the applicant and the commission sees that that is compatible with the area, you would not want to impose a restriction on the style of the sign.
I'm fine with those, I'm fine with those sizes on the, on the sign. Okay, and if we remove the monument style, have we opened the door for any, any style sign? Is there any downside, let me ask it that way, to, to removing the monument style? Do we need to describe this sign?
You can. I guess it's just whatever you're comfortable with and whatever the applicant is comfortable with. He has described a sign that would be constructed on two posts, but if there's no restriction on the style or the type that's going to be constructed, you could just have a single pole sign, for example. So if it's something that you feel is important, it's probably worth addressing now.
I don't have a reservation with the 32 square feet. Certainly acceptable to me. And that's four by eight, that's, I mean, there's only so much you can do with that.
So Kevin, do you agree to a new development plan condition number six, which would limit signage on the property to a single sign, five feet in height, with a square footage of no greater than 32 square feet?
Sure, that, that would be probably way more than I'll use, actually.
Hamp, I hate to interrupt, but those are the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance and the, or the maximum. So there would be no need to include a condition, since that's just the standard.
Okay. So, well, I guess, Mr. Chairman, we can see if, if the ordinance minimums meet the, meet the will of the commission.
I'm good with that. I have no objection. So we're, we're all in agreement that the zoning ordinance minimums are acceptable?
No, I'd like to see them spelled out in number six, and actually, because if this property were to be sold, we want to make sure that we have it spelled out.
Well, yeah, but you, they can't be any more than that. They're already, they're already in it.
The height and square footage, yeah, the height and square footage that we discussed, maximum five feet in height, maximum sign face area of 32 square feet, that is required by the zoning ordinance. So there could be no sign placed on the property in excess of that, yes.
So it won't be any signage on the building itself? It'll just be out in the yard?
No, there, there could also be wall signage on the property, on the building. The zoning ordinance would allow wall signage up to 50 square feet or 5% of the facade, whichever is greater.
I don't intend to put any signage on the building itself, so if that helps anybody.
Are you, are you good with that, Sandy?
I still would like to see it in writing, but understand what you're saying. I just see too many of these things be given one thing and then something changes and then everything else changes.
Well, we could put it...
The other thing, oh, sorry, Chair Warren, Chair Warren, go ahead.
No, it's okay, Rachel. If, if Mr. Crosland agrees to it, we could put that in there. There would be no signage on the building.
Well, one thing I may mention, just depending on the final layout of the property and design of the site, if the building is located less than 20 feet from the front property line, then there, there wouldn't be the option to place a freestanding sign on the property because the, the freestanding sign by requirement of the zoning ordinance has to be 20 feet back from the edge of pavement. I think during the pre-application meeting, we did discuss being able to locate it in an area that would meet other requirements for freestanding signs, but I did just want to mention that.
Are there any comments from the commissioners or questions to the applicant? We have all the revisions in the, in the notes, correct, Jessica?
Yes, Commissioner Warren.
Any other comments? We're voting on two things. We're voting for the zoning change and then also the variance. But we have a motion on the zoning change.
I make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with addition upon the general development, number 202010B, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the focus, with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
Jessica?
Yes, Chair, Commissioner Clark?
Is the motion based upon the changes that we've made tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yes, as long as those changes are all in there.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes.
Commissioner Battawi?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Our second, our second vote, our, our request tonight is the variance request. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the request for the variance at zero East 13th Ave. Docket number 2020B01, a variance of five feet from the required side yard setback of 10 feet. The testimony presented in the public hearing has shown that the granting of this variance will not adversely affect public health, safety, or welfare, will not alter the essential character of the general vicinity, will not cause a hazard or nuisance to the public, and will not be unreasonable in certain event of the requirements of the zoning regulation.
Second.
Jessica?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Battawi?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Motion approves. Thank you, Mr. Crosland.
Thank you so much.
Next item, our next item is items five and six. 202006 Flume Jerry and Ann Woolbright and Maurice and Janice Miller have filed an application for a future land use map amendment on a portion of a tract of land containing approximately 1.5 acres located zero Baron River Road, approximately 630 feet northwest of the intersection of Holls Chapel Road and Baron River Road from Ag to RE Residential State with the general development.
All right. Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application conference for the property you see outlined there in yellow on February 19th. That property, as Chair Warren has already said, is zoned agriculture. Its current use is agriculture. With, with this application, the, the resulting land use would be single-family residential. The future land use map currently is agriculture with a request to change that, and then I'll leave this up, we can reference as we go along. The applicants are requesting tonight, with that requested future land use map amendment of 1.5 acres, if that's successful, the zone change from Ag to RE Residential State to develop that property with a maximum of one single-family residential lot. The property, as far as we know, has always been zoned agriculture. If this application is successful, the proposed density would be 6, 7 dwelling units per acre. The proposed RE zone is a potentially compatible zoning designation in the rural density residential Flume category, which is that category they're requesting Flume to be amended to. It may be appropriate if this body determines that the proposed development is compatible with the surrounding area. All right. In your staff report, I'm going to move on to page two, where we have our, our information there from LU 114 of the Comprehensive Plan that outlines the procedures for amending the future land use map. The applicant submitted the following information to address those criteria. The applicant proposes one lot, one and a half acres, to be rezoned RE and a single-family residence built and moved on to. This is family land that will remain within the family. While that, in the staff report, staff has, has noted that the applicants have also submitted development plan conditions with the rezoning application that was filed concurrently with this future land use map amendment application. The proposed development plan conditions address items of compatibility, including minimum square footage for any new home constructed on the property, building materials, building orientation, and the front yard setback along Baron River Road. So we'll get to those in just a second. Under the site characteristics review, just to point out the water adequacy, the property does not have adequate water flow to meet the minimum fire protection requirements, but is exempt because only one additional lot is proposed. Going on to page three of your staff report, just noting that the property contains soil types that are classified as prime farmland and prime farmland if drained, and the majority of the property contains soil types that are classified as somewhat limited regarding soil suitability for septic tank absorption fields. Below that, the site and design compatibility review, the surrounding density, the area is mainly comprised, comprised of agricultural tracts. I'm going to go back here just a second, so we kind of see the area here. There are some rural density residential estate lots scattered along Baron River Road. You see here the land use map, I forgot to kind of touch on that earlier, but as you can see, it is mostly agricultural with some single- Well, that, in the staff report, staff has, has noted that the applicants have also submitted development plan conditions with the rezoning application that was filed concurrently with this future land use map amendment application. The proposed development plan conditions address items of compatibility, including minimum square footage for any new home constructed on the property, building materials, building orientation, and the front yard setback along Barron River Road. So we'll get to those in just a second. Under the site characteristics review, just to point out the water adequacy, the property does not have adequate water flow, meet the minimum fire protection requirements, but is exempt because only one additional lot is proposed. Go on to page three, your staff report, just noting that the property contains soil types that are classified as prime farmland and prime farmland drained. And the majority of the property contains soil types that are classified as somewhat limited regarding soil suitability for septic tank absorption fields. Below that, the site and design compatibility review. The surrounding density, the area is mainly comprised, comprised of agricultural tracts. I'm going to go back here just a second, so we kind of see the area here. There are some rural density residential estate lots scattered along Barron River Road. You see here the land use map, I forgot to kind of touch on that earlier, but as you can see, it is mostly agricultural, with some single-family residential, and then a public institutional use and a few vacant tracts scattered around. Surrounding architectural features, the majority of other structures in the area are one-story, with a few taller agricultural and public institutional buildings also located nearby. Home size range from 1,100 square feet to 1,728 square feet, the median home size being 1,233.5 square feet. Building materials, the majority of residences in the area are vinyl. Building foundations are a mixture of stone, split-faced, and plain-faced block. In building orientation, existing structures on Barron River Road are oriented to face Barron River Road. I'll go on to the development plan conditions, there are six of them. I'll go ahead and read those. Number one, minimum home size for any new home constructed on the property shall be 1,200 square feet. Number two, proposed residence will have a vinyl siding exterior. Number three, the new residence shall obtain a permit from the Barron River District Health Department prior to the issuance of a building, building permit. Number four, any new access to the property shall be coordinated with and approved by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. Number five, proposed residence will face Barron River Road. Number six, front setback will be at least 50 feet from Barron River Road. So with that, we'll go to the Focus 2030 category review. There were 12 items that, that staff pulled out as applicable to this application. Four of them comply, and then eight are to be determined. Those you'll see listed there, does deal with the Flume, which we already talked about, LU114. The proposal may comply with LU111 and 112, if deemed compatible with the surrounding area and that Flume amendment is successful, and if this body determines that the proposal is compatible and complies with LU113. The proposal may comply with LU2, which is up to you to determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that includes design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. The proposal may comply with NCR24. The planning commission should determine if the proposed development will preserve and enhance the rural character of the area. You all should also determine compliance with NCR241, and whether or not the proposed lots will result in, lots will result in an increased amount of development pressure on the countryside. And the proposal may comply with HN21 and HN4. And so it's up to you all to determine if the location of the planned development is suitable for the proposed housing type, and if the proposed residence is believed to enhance the array of housing options available in the area. So I will go back to the first page, where we have our points to consider. This body should consider if the argument provided by the applicants to amend the Flume meets the criteria outlined in LU114. If the Flume amendment is approved, the proposal would be consistent with the Flume and the rural density residential category. The proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria. The proposed general development plan complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design, and meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. And compatibility of this development should be determined by the planning commission. That is all I have for the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And the applicant is with us, I believe.
Are there any questions from Monica, from the commissioners? Any comments from commissioners? And I believe our applicant is on the line. Would you state your name to the record, please?
Ann Woolbright, Jerry Woolbright, Janice Miller, and Maurice Miller are all here.
Okay, thank you all very much. Do you have any additional comments to your requests?
No.
All right, thank you very much. No comments from the applicant, no comments from the commissioners? We're, we are voting on two items. One is to approve the future land use map amendment, and then also the zoning map amendment.
Make the motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment, docket number 2026Flume. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed Flume amendment has met the directive to amend the Flume as outlined in LU114, the comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Before, before we vote on that motion, and I apologize, I didn't ask, didn't suggest this earlier, let the record reflect that there, if you would, please inquire as to whether there's any opposition, and if the record could reflect that appropriately.
Sorry, Hamp, forgot.
No, I'm sorry.
Is there any opposition?
Thank you.
Let, let record reflect no opposition, so let's start, start our vote. Well, we had, we had, Mr. Gay gave the amendment to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Jessica?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell? Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Then we need a motion to approve the zoning map amendment change.
I make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with and conditioned upon the general development plan, docket number 202015Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is, excuse me, consistent with the adopted future land, future Focus 2020 Comprehensive Plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and actions permitted in this staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request that the motions include the summary of the evidence and testimony presented in the witnesses of the public hearing this evening.
Second.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell? Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Thank you, yes, ma'am. Next item is number seven. David Hall and Kristen Hall and the City-County Planning Commission have filed an application to rezone a portion of a tract of land containing approximately 4.4 acre, 1.4 acres located 350 to Trace Circle from Ag to RE Residential State.
Thank you, I thank you, Chair Warren. For the staff report, I, I won't dive into this one too much unless you have specific questions. This is one of our cleanup items. The, the owners, they, they bought a small piece of land, and they want to add it to their lot. And so this is just cleaning it up to make the zoning uniform. And so anyway, if you all have any questions, we can certainly go through the items in the staff report, but, but this is a cleanup.
Hamp, did, Hamp, is this, we didn't, we talked about where we can just go ahead and make a motion on this?
Yeah, Ms. Ramsey, would you permit your staff report to be made a part of this record as if it were read in its entirety?
Yes, sir.
And there being no objection to proceeding that way, then the staff report will stand submitted as, as read. And if, Mr. Chairman, you would inquire as to whether or not the applicant wishes to add anything, or if there's any opposition, I think we'll be ready for a vote.
Okay, David and Kristen, if you're on the call, do you have any, any comments? They're not on the call, is there any opposition? Hearing none, call for, call for a motion, please.
Did we have the caption clear?
I make, I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, docket number 202017ZCO. Based on the testimony, documents presented in the public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan, as demonstrated in its compliance and the objectives and action items presented by the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Clark?
Were the applicants here, I didn't hear them say anything.
I think that the applicant whose name is Hall is not present. The applicant City-County Planning Commission is present.
So they're representing the Halls?
That, they are, they are tonight. I think they filed this application on their behalf, is that true, Mr. Peterson?
I'm just correct, this is, this, this is a cleanup item, as is the next item. Whenever someone buys a little sliver of property, or adds property, or just simply switches property lines, we get their permission by power of attorney to go ahead and record that plat, knowing that we'll clean those zoning lines up later. So, so they're aware of this, and we have their full permission to do so.
Okay, yes, Ben.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, motion approved. Our last item tonight is 202018Z County. Betty James and Robert James, City Plan, City-County Planning Commission have filed an application to rezone a portion of a tract of land containing approximately 1.93 acres located in 755 and 835 Goshen Church North Road from Ag to RE, and portions of a tract of land containing approximately 0.41 acres located zero Goshen Church, Goshen Church North Road from RE to Ag.
Thank you, Chair Warren. Yeah, I'll just kind of repeat myself from the last one. This is, this is similar to the last application that we just saw. This is a cleanup for a property swap, is what's happening here. So, so again, if anybody has any questions, we can go over any items in the staff report that anybody needs, but otherwise, this is very similar to what we just had.
Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Ramsey? Are the applicants on the, on the Zoom call?
No, sir, the same case last time they gave a committee of power of attorney to represent their behalf.
Sure, is there any opposition to this? Hearing none, we call for motion, please.
I make a motion to approve proposed zoning map amendment, docket number 202018Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am, motion approves. Thank you, Jessica. All right, we will now be entering into our last items, our discussion items. I think, Ben, you have a couple of items you'd like to cover.
Yes, so we, we have a need for an executive session and to discuss some personnel matters. Hamp, if you're ready to reference the.
I am.
Okay, go ahead.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, if you would please call for a motion that the commission go into closed session pursuant to KRS 61.810 for the purpose of discussing the appointment, discipline, or dismissal of an employee of the planning commission.
Call that the Warren County, Bowling Green Warren County Planning Commission go into an executive, executive session at this time to discuss personnel matters, and need a motion on that, please.
I make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to KRS.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell? Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Our last item in business tonight, we have a recommendation from our personnel committee for three changes, do we have a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, after a discussion in closed session, that we affirm all the recommendations of the personnel committee in their entirety.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Unsell? I didn't.
Sir.
Okay. Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir.